Good evening and welcome to the February 25th Maplewood City Council Workshop. City Manager Coleman, would you do the roll call for us, please?
Absolutely, thank you Mayor. Councilmember Juneman?
Here.
Councilmember Knudsen?
Here.
Councilmember Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Nesbitt?
And Mayor Abrams?
Here. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Second?
Moved by Neblet, second by Smith to approve the agenda. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. We have no unfinished business tonight. We do have some new business. We have some guests here. Our first presentation is going to be from the XL, with XL Energy, concerning the County Road B gas main replacement update. And Public Works Director, Mr. Love, I'm going to turn this over to you.
Absolutely. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So tonight we have with us representatives from XL Energy, including Jake Sledcheck, David Butler, and Codran Miller. They're going to be giving us a presentation on a project that's going to be going on for about two years, starting this summer. It's a pretty big gas main replacement, so we wanted to make sure to start informing Council about it and let them, let you guys know what's coming. So with that, I'll turn it over to XL.
Good evening and welcome to the Maplewood City Council Workshop. Do you want to start with your name, please?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor Madam, Council. My name is Jake Sidloczek. I am a Community Relations Representative for XL Energy. My office is out of Newport, Minnesota, but I get to represent a number of communities on the east side of the metro area. And the last time I was here, I was actually working with Sean because we were trying to convince the Council to do Partners in Energy. So it kind of shows a little bit of the diversity of the role I get. So we were talking about, you know, energy saving and working with the community, and here we are, talking about some critical infrastructure. So I see the slide is up there. So I am Community Relations. I am not the engineer. I am not the project manager, but fortunately, they were nice enough to show up this evening. So if we get into heavy detail, they'll certainly be willing to get up and answer questions. And the point of the presentation tonight is just to keep you informed. There's been a lot of legwork done on this, working very closely with city staff and county staff to make sure that we understand all of the critical points in this project, that they have an understanding of what the scale of work is, and that, you know, of course, the bottom line is to make sure that this is done as safely, as quickly, and restored as much as possible to what it was today. So we'll give you an overview on the project here. All right, so the basics of it, this is a system revitalization. This is not a system which is in need of repair. It's just come time that we're ready to bring this up to the current standard for gas facilities in the area. This is one of a many number of these projects, which has been happening throughout the metro area. You up here in Maplewood have most recently been impacted by the Rice Street project. If you remember, about five years ago, we had, that was under the drive lane in Rice Street. That was a pretty significant hurdle to get that done without having too much of an impact on the businesses, residents that use Rice Street every day. Very similar project. It's a revitalization. We're going to be putting new pipe in the ground, replacing it in place of what was there, so you're not going to have an old gas main and a new gas main. You'll just have the one gas main. And then improved safety and reliability. One of the neat features about this, I say neat, I geek out on utility stuff, I'm sorry. But we are able to put an inspection device into these new pipelines that we're revitalizing around the metro area, that will go through and give us real-time data on the quality of the pipe, any issues with it whatsoever. If there is something that comes up that is found, we can pinpoint it and do some precision work to get down to it and repair that. So while the existing pipeline along County Road B has given us very little issues in the, I don't know, 30, 40 years, 55 years, our engineer is saying, we think this new one will last even longer because of the technology that's going into it. So this didn't show up quite as well as I had hoped it would, but it is 9.25 miles. We're splitting it up into three sections. Century Avenue, that is the gold. You can see from Stillwater Boulevard north to South Road, County Road B. And then the green section goes from Century Avenue right out Frontier to White Bear Avenue. So that's our intended project for 2019. We've been working closely with city staff from, well, let's see, it would be Maplewood and North St. Paul for this section, on identifying red flags. There are some structures which we were able to take out as a result of this, and we're talking about where future roadway improvements might happen so that we've got our facilities well enough away from all of that. So that is a big enough project for one year. And then the following year, 2020, we will be tackling that blue section, which has got some unique characteristics to it, having to get around 61, going through a park, some wetland impacts there. So those are the two projects, but for this year, it's Century Avenue and B from Century Avenue to White Bear. This is a typical look at what this trench will look like. In this one, you can actually see the old pipeline in there that's getting prepped to be removed. The new one is welded in place and then rolled into that trench. Everything is packed or is restored to MINDOT standards. So it will be as good a road base in some situations on these older rights of way. Sometimes it's a better base that goes under this. And then it's the same treatment if we're under a roadway, under a shoulder, or under a trail. We still meet MINDOT standards, so it will be something that this, the pervious, impervious surface on top is not going to flex, roll, sag. And if it is, we'll be back to fix it. So that's just an example. Obviously, we had a little bit more room to work on that one. We're going to be a little bit closer to people's yards and bus stops and trails and everything else with County Road B. There might not be as much elbow room to take pictures. Anticipate a project schedule. We're looking to start in May. Part of that is in the MINDOT right-of-way. We've got that permit procured to work down along Century Avenue. Oh, sorry, that's when the construction equipment will arrive. That will also be, then we're setting up detours, you know, area signage so that people know, hey, we're here and it's getting in. Barriers will be set up where those are necessary. So then in late May, the construction itself will start. And again, it's County Road B. We're starting at Century Avenue, or I guess it's at an existing facility that's just west of Century Avenue. And that work, we've already cleared the site there, so people that are familiar with that side of County Road B will notice that the trees have been removed by our facility there. And honestly, we're hoping to have this all done by September. The gas line will be in service and we'll be paving and soft surface restoration, all of that. We're anticipating, while there are some tricky spots on this one, it's pretty straightforward. And honestly, some of the most difficult spots we have are in North St. Paul, where they've got some underground facilities of their own, that we just need to make sure that we're working around keeping safe distances and we're not creating vibrations for those I did mention that this has been a collaborative process. All in all, we've got five different cities that this touches. Obviously Ramsey County is a big player in the game, and then the state of Minnesota with a couple of areas impacted. We've had a number of meetings, just to make sure, you know, staffs had a chance to weigh in. We gave them a preliminary look at plans. We've heard about, you know, transportation issues, concerns, pinch points, so that we make sure that as we're routing folks around this project, that we're doing it in the least painful way possible. On the 2020 phase, is it Arcade Street? It's got some unique characteristics to that, so we're going to be tucking in that in more detail this year as we're constructing the current phase. So yes, in those meetings, it's sensitive areas. Wetlands, of course, are a big deal along County Road B. We've got a couple of funny little pockets, and in such a limited right-of-way, we want to make sure that we're at least keeping that functioning the way they are. Now the wetlands are potentially even improving them if there's an opportunity to do so. Of course, the impact to public is undeniable on this. We will have to close sections of County Road B, and we'll have to route people around that, so the better we can communicate that to them and keep them informed, we think that'll help minimize the pain. And then, of course, those conversations have been to make sure that we fully understand the requirements. We know what we like to do on a project, and communities have their own different flavors and concerns. And sometimes there are even opportunities that we could restore it as it was, but if you've got something you're planning to do here in terms of a PED ramp or an improvement, perhaps we can do that when we restore it. Communication obviously is going to be key on this one. We've learned that from other projects. I mean, with the coordination we've done between the communities, sorry, with the government agencies, we're pretty confident that construction communication is going to be good, with that regular meeting setup. This website is not live yet, but I was able to sneak a picture of it for your use. It will be on our webpage. It's something that we would encourage the cities to link to. In other projects, we found these to be very useful. Now, we've got a lot of whether folks are concerned about the project, they've got a question, or if they just want to keep up to date on it. This will be a great resource for folks. I'm not sure if you're able to see it on the screen there, but we've got project overview, schedule, construction, public outreach, safety, and a contact list are all hot links on that page. And when they choose to call us or email us, that's something that we're going to, at a minimum, 24 hours, we hope we never take 24 hours to get back to a concerned citizen. I can say from personal experience, the most recent one we had was in Woodbury along Valley Creek Road, and our most concerned audience were our bike commuters. Because, you know, they've got, you know, sometimes very set routes where they like to go on, so if we've got bike commuters that have been using County Road B, we're going to hear from them early and often, and we're going to make sure that they know how they can safely get around the project. So this webpage is going up. That's just one of the tools we're using for communication. Email updates will be available. Those will go out on a regular basis. Project-specific email address and hotline, that'll be on the webpage. It'll be on the door hangers that we're doing. It's something that city staff will have. So there'll be a specific email just for this project, and then the communications individuals will route that to the right folks. We were just discussing that today in our conference call, about how do we make sure that everyone that needs to be in the loop is on the loop? We got a pretty good commitment from our communications folks that they understand, you know, that we don't want to miss anything. So I mentioned, we will be doing visits and door hangers. We're not going to visit every residential property. We've got mailings going out and other information sources. Every business we do visit with individually to make sure they understand the impact to access. There's some, especially in that corner, I guess, that is Maplewood yet, on that corner of Century and south, they want to make sure that with the two projects going on, they have got one solid access and that their customers know how to safely get in and out of those. The direct mailings are a pretty easy thing. We try to make them look pretty and flashy so they don't get thrown away right away. Hopefully it's something worthy of posting on their fridge, so when they have a question or if they don't feel it's going fast enough, they remember, hey, I know the place to look for more information. And content for city-county communications. We'll have our website, which is linkable. We strongly encourage cities to kind of put it in their own words and talk about, here's what XL's been up to in past, in the past projects. We've invited the cities and counties to be a part of our weekly project calls, so they can take that and glean what they want from it, or else we'll provide information so that they can make sure that we're reaching out in any way, shape possible, that folks will be informed on it. Here are the contacts. I don't anticipate that you'll commit this to memory, but you're going to be seeing these names quite a bit. Myself, the long Bohemian name on the last there. But David Butler is in the audience tonight. He is our project manager for County Road B section, so he'll have County Road B this year and next year. Mr. Ben Hock is not with us tonight. He is the project manager for the Century Avenue work. I've thrown a lot at you. I haven't even taken a breath, it seems like. Would love to answer questions that you may have about the process, the project, you know, what we're doing to keep folks informed. And we don't want to get too into the weeds technically, but we do have a couple of folks here that are very good at answering technical questions.
Thank you for your presentation. I really appreciate that you are really looking at this from a broad range of ways that you can communicate, from the website to email updates, to door hangers, to direct mailings. This is a big project, and we certainly know that there will be a certain amount of disruption. Certainly, you know, you're cutting through neighborhoods, and so it's really going to be affecting a lot of citizens, and I appreciate the fact that you're working so hard, or will be working so hard at communications. When do you expect that your communications will start with residents?
I should recall, but I'll look back to David here, in part because he put on a tie for tonight, I'll let David come up here and talk about when the communications will start.
Welcome. You must be David Butler?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Welcome to the Maplewood City Council Workshop.
Yes. Thank you for your time.
When will you start your communication?
The direct communications, we're looking to be about four or five weeks prior to construction for direct mailings and direct communications with landowners.
Okay.
Some of the larger businesses, we'll reach out to prior to that, possibly two months before construction.
Let me ask you a simple construction question. Will the road be completely shut down in areas, or will it be passable on only one side? What can we kind of expect?
For the south, well...
For Century Avenue?
For Century Avenue, we're going to keep, we're trying to keep both lanes open.
Okay.
That's part of the MINDOT permit we're working through. As you go down south and County Road B, that does have to be shut down completely during the, let's say, the construction phase. So we'll have a soft closure and then a hard closure where the construction crews are actually working. So there'll be crews kind of prepping out ahead of that crew that's taking the pipe out and putting the pipe back. So that section will be closed completely. The other section will be closed through traffic, and homeowners and driveways will be accessible in those soft closures.
Okay.
And part of our contract with the contractor is provide steel plates for emergency access or emergency situations, or emergency access to landowners in their driveways. So at any time, if there's an emergency, we'll have access to any driveway.
Okay. I have just one other question, and then I see other lights are on, but the city is right on. The city building here is right on County Road B to our access, and so is our community center. And, you know, when I arrived here earlier today, we were packed because we have, we do license tab renewals, license renewals, passports, that kind of thing. And with MINLARS and the difficulty of MINLARS, things are moving pretty slowly. You know, our staff are working really very hard, but it's already a very frustrating situation to try to get over here and then to wait in lines because of MINLARS, and now we're going to have some construction right out front. How is it that, and, you know, we've got police coming and going, we've got our Public Works building here as well, so how are you going to address that in front of City Hall for all the people that have to come in here each day?
Sure. We'll have a, we have a preliminary traffic control plan that we have with Ramsey County. We're having them review that. When the contractor's on board, we have their crew makeup and their crew schedule. We'll get a more detailed, probably 15 to 20 pages of traffic plans. So situations like the City Hall or other large businesses and schools will have specific traffic control plan for that block or that 200 feet. And that'll kind of say, hey, here are, you know, three days where we're going to be crossing this, so we're going to do half the entrance at a time, and the next half after we backfill it, to keep that constant access. It'll also show where the signage will be to how to get to and from large businesses or certain areas that constant access needs to happen.
And will you be communicating with our Public Works Director, Mr. Love?
Absolutely.
Okay, good, good. Thank you. Councilmember Juneman?
Thank you. On the County Road B section, once you go down Highway 61, when you cross over, you're going to be going up Arcade Street. Do you know at this point, is that which side of that street? Or is it down the middle of the street? Or what is it? Because there's some sensitive, there's Keller Lake there, but there are also wetlands along there. There's some sensitive properties, so do you know where it's going to go there?
Correct. County, we're on the east side, aren't we? Yes, we are. Yeah, we're on the east side of Arcade.
Well, that's the sensitive wetland side. Hmm, okay.
So, Councilmember Juneman, that's one of the ones, fortunately, it's a 2020, and we've had considerable conversation with Ramsey County Parks about the park itself and the wetlands in the area. So I mentioned, that's one of the ones that we're going to have to discuss because there's a greater road impact there. Then there are other sections of it, too. So that's certainly a work in progress. While we're, right now, I think the existing pipe is on the east. Our preference is to replace in place. That might change for that section that runs north-south there.
Thank you.
Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. For the section along, well, for all the sections, I think what I'm most concerned about are for seniors and people with disabilities, and making sure that we're maintaining access for those folks. Are we doing any extra outreach ahead of time? I know that Mr. Love and his team have done a great job in the past of really trying to meet the needs of folks who have those kinds of needs of access. When we've done road projects in the past, I just want to make sure we're keeping up the same level of commitment.
So a few things. I don't have a list of elderly or disabled people. We will accommodate anyone and everyone. We have talked to Met Transit about some of the stops along the way already and how to reroute those areas, and some of the comments they had were, you know, we'll work together with the cities and the county, but they had a few ideas about how to make that work. It's not formally completed plan, but I trust Met Transit to complete that. We also, we have that in our contract, that these contractors, as they're moving along, are out in front of the project notifying people and getting in contact what those needs are in case there's a special need. And then as we restore the project, any PED ramps that are there, we'll replace. Any PED ramps that aren't there, we'll be putting new ones in for those intersections,
I'll step in again. Artin, Steve, have a comment?
Mayor and Council, maybe I could ask XL, this is a little bit different than what you've seen in our street projects, where we have the entire road completely torn up, big trenches, lots of dirt and everything. Maybe you can comment a little bit on, like, the speed of progression of how much main is being replaced to give the council an idea of how this traveling window of a hard closure, it's not the whole length at one time.
Great, I'll let David handle that, but first I want to address Mr. Smith's, Councilmember Smith's question. We haven't reached out specifically to Metro Mobility. That's a great opportunity. I'm not sure if Met Council would, but that's why it's good to talk about these projects beforehand, so we'll make sure that we've talked to the folks at Metro Mobility to identify who along that route is going to need that extra attention.
I think that's a good point.
Yeah, and I might, I was just going to say, I might suspect that within the bureaucracy of the Met Council, they may not all talk to each other all the time, so it's probably good for you guys to bring them to the table.
Sure. Thank you for that reminder. And I don't know if you guys were able to see in the picture, when we pull that pipe out and replace it, it's approximately a six-foot wide trench, and most of the work to make that ditch and make the wells and get the pipe in the ditch is part of why we're taking up, let's say, both lanes of traffic. So we're planning on not being too far outside of the asphalt edges or curb-to-curb. In some cases, there may be damage. We'll replace that, but the plan is to stay within edge of asphalt, edge of asphalt. So most of the path is not going to be impacted where there'll be, let's say, walkways. We will be shutting down part of those and rerouting pedestrians, but as far as major impacts to access in those areas won't be an issue.
And then block by block?
Yes, and so it's about anywhere from 150 to 200 feet a day is the average length that we'll remove and replace. And so there'll be about four to five blocks of complete impact, and this, it will just slowly kind of move along as four to five blocks at a time.
Okay. Any other questions, Councilmembers? Councilmember Smith?
So just to put that in terms, if I have a house there, that four or five blocks, how long is that train of construction moving past my house, do you think? Couple weeks, or?
Yeah, a few weeks. I'd say the direct impact of that, that, the driveway where you won't be able to use it for that X amount of time is a day or two. But again, steel plates, if there's an issue of weather, there's an issue, access will be every day.
So, Councilmember Smith, part of the communication, the email update, is to say, we anticipate that we'll be working between X and X in the next two weeks. We are restoring blocks X through X, so that'll be part of that rolling communication process.
Okay. Councilmember Neblet?
Thank you, Mayor. As someone who lives on County Road B, I was just thinking about access, and I think you talked a little bit about this. How am I gonna, or are citizens going to get out of their driveways?
So as we approach, let's say, your property, you'll be notified a week or two weeks in advance, say, you'll see us coming, but we'll have, make sure we'll get a door hanger in communication and say, hey, we're coming, we'll be here, let's say, by next Wednesday, we're going to cross your driveway. Do you need anything special? Do you have any timeframes that maybe you leave to get to work at 5:00? So we'll make sure that that's not an impact to the crew and not an impact to you. And as we cut across, because eventually we will cross your driveway, that'll be scheduled either while you're away, or again, as we get closer to your specific property, say, it is going to be tomorrow, it's going to be between 4:00 and 6:00. Make that excavation, remove that pipe, have the welded pipe ready, go back in the hole and either backfill with gravel at that time, or if we're at a point where weather or emergency or something like that, the steel plates will be put in place to get you access, let's say if it's a temporary thing, to get in your house, get out. So we ideally prefer not to use the steel plates, but if we need to... So, we ideally prefer not to use the steel plates, but if, if we need to, we will use them.
Thank you.
Councilmember Juneman.
This may sound mundane, but having sat through many street project issues, you're probably going to be digging up some mailboxes along the way. How do you handle that issue?
We will. And we've, we've reached out to the post office to discuss how that's going to proceed. We do have part of our mass communications or community relations consultants working with us to kind of help plan that out. And as far as permits or applications, I don't think we have to complete any, but we do need to work with the post office and that is...
And then that'll be part of the notifications so the neighbors don't know which direction to go, run to their mailbox.
Correct.
That may seem like a funny question, but believe me, it's important.
As well as garbage and recycling, there's lots of neighborhood details that we've come across and we're, we're working through. It's, it's, it's a large, I mean, you're impacting everyone's day from Sunday to Monday and so it's something we're taking into account.
Thank you.
Thank you, councilmembers. I think those are some really good questions. Obviously, we're concerned. We also recognize the importance of, of infrastructure in our city. Maybe can you talk, and this really is for the people that are watching, can you just kind of explain why we need to do this in our city? Just a brief little...
He's a very smart individual, but he's also very good at breaking it down in layman's terms. I'd like to have Conrad Miller come up and just touch on the why of the project.
We're going to get you all up here tonight.
I think it's so we don't go boom, but I could be wrong.
Thank you and welcome to our workshop tonight.
Thank you, Mayor.
Tell us your name, please.
My name is Conrad Miller. I'm a project engineer associated with this project. This pipe was installed in 1955 to 1957 and it's served us very well. However, things have changed. Today, our federal, we're, we build our pipe, maintain our pipe to federal standards and requirements and those have changed over the years to the point where we can no longer maintain the pipe to what we expect federal standards will be tomorrow as well as what they are today and so...
Do you want to step a little closer to the microphone?
Especially with the pipe being as old as it is, installed in 55 and through 57, we've made a decision as a corporation to renew and reinvest in our pipelines so that they're safe as possible. So, we're going to replace this pipe with a stronger pipe, thicker pipe, which will make it even more durable for what we're doing. But more importantly, we're removing a lot of the structures that are in, built into the pipe that'll allow us to insert inline inspection tools. Jake referred to that early in the presentation and what that's intended to do is let us see what's going on in our pipe. In the event that a contractor were to damage the pipe and cover it up, we have that opportunity to look at the pipe every five to seven years just to make sure that everything is still doing really well. And again, this pipe's been in service since between 1955 and 57 and some of you have hairs like mine, we've not had any significant events with this pipe, but it is time for it to go, time for it to be replaced.
Okay, thank you for that background and thank you for your presentation tonight, gentlemen. Councilmember Neblet, we're going to ask you, I will ask you, since you live on County Road B, if you would please sometime over the summer, inform us how the whole construction will, is going. Would you do that, please?
I would be happy to, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, moving on to our next agenda item. I believe that this is Sean Finwall. We're going to be talking about Maplewood Residential Curbside Trash and Recycling Contracts Update.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So, tonight we will be talking about our trash and recycling contracts. The city of Maplewood has had an organized trash system since 2012 and an organized recycling system for the last 20 years. We have two haulers that collect the trash and recycling and both of those contracts will expire December of 2019. So, we're going to start by just taking a quick look at our existing contracts. So, for trash hauling, we have Republic Services as our contracted hauler. That contract began in 2012 after we had organized our trash hauling and that contract was a seven-year contract with two, a two-year extended possibility. So, we did take advantage of that extension and now we are under this two-year extended contract, which again ends the end of this year. They do collect curbside collection of single-family residential homes, four or less units, as well as manufactured homes and townhomes that can opt into the program. And the reason for that was when we organized trash hauling, it was noted that townhomes and manufactured homes contract with one hauler as it is. So, they're already basically organized, but we wanted to have them have the opportunity to opt into our system. And since that time, we've had maybe about half of the townhomes and manufactured homes opt into the city's system with the others remaining on their own contract. Republic Services does collect trash, yard waste and bulky items curbside. The city does supply the carts in four sizes and when we organized our trash hauling, we did do a large purchase of those carts. So, those are city-owned carts, but Republic Services manages those carts for the city. Republic Services does the billing for just the trash hauling because of course, the city of Maplewood does not do utility billing. So, on that RFP, when we put that out, we had required that the trash hauler do the billing for just the trash. And the trash collection rates currently range from $9.79 to $14.66 per month, depending on that cart size. And that does include the taxes and a 75-cent cart fee that the city taxed on to cover the cost of those carts. Now, these rates have remained relatively low, probably some of the lowest in the Twin City area since we organized our trash hauling. Then I wanted to go into recycling. The city of Maplewood contracts with Tennis Sanitation for our recycling. That is a two-year extended contract that ends the end of this year. That contract originally began in 2010 with our partnership with Tennis. They have curbside collection of single-family residential homes as well as centralized collection for all multifamily homes. So, that's different than our trash hauling, which of course, we just collect for the single-family homes. They do single-sort recyclables in carts that are supplied by Tennis. So, these are Tennis-owned carts and we had rolled those out a few years ago. Prior to that, we were collecting recycling in the bins, you may recall. And so, those are offered to our residents in three sizes. Tennis does charge the city currently $2.86 per household per month and then the city charges our residents $3.54 per household per month, of course, to cover the cost of our recycling program. So, we're here tonight to, number one, kind of educate the new council on where we've been and then talk about where we should go with our solid waste management program. So, the trash and recycling contract term expiration dates, for the first time since we've organized our trash are aligned and will expire at the same time. So, this opens up an opportunity for the city of Maplewood to review its solid waste program in a comprehensive manner rather than just doing RFPs or negotiations with just trash or recycling. So, there are two approaches to moving forward. First, we could do a request for proposal where we put out a request and any hauler, of course, can bid, put in a proposal on the city's solid waste program, depending on what our current goals and objectives are. And then, of course, second being negotiation with our existing haulers. So, to kind of go into the pros and cons of both of those options, we'll start with the request for proposal. So, I wanted to point out that back in 2011, when we organized our trash hauling and the city put together the contract with Republic Services, it was a policy decision with the city council at the time to include some language which states that the city shall use a competitive purchasing process to select a contractor after the term of contract expiration. And the purpose for that was, when we organized, we had nine residentially licensed haulers at the time and the city council at the time wanted to ensure that all haulers in the future had an opportunity to bid on the contract, especially after choosing the route of going with one hauler for our entire city. So, that was the policy as written at the time. We have talked to our city attorney about the language in the contract and Mr. Batty does indicate that it doesn't preclude the city from negotiating, but it is a policy question that we should pose to our current city council. So, that's before you tonight as a question. I wanted to get into the pros and cons now for the request for proposal. First of all, for the pros is, of course, the policy precedent that I had indicated. Pricing, so city staff has done some preliminary investigation with some of the haulers on what the prices would be if we were to go out for competitive bid and we do feel that we would get some competitive pricing. We do feel that we would receive multiple proposals. So, that's an indication currently that that RFP process may be successful. The other item is bundling. So, currently, of course, we have these two systems that we're managing, two separate contracts. And if we were to bundle, you know, we'd have to do that in an RFP process. We couldn't bundle the two in current negotiations. And there are some positives to bundling. Number one being communications, kind of one example is, you may recall, two weeks ago, we had some really icy weather and one of our contractors had to delay the hauling and so a robo-call was put out to all of the city's residents. And the other hauler didn't have to delay, but the residents thought that both the trash and recycling were delayed. So, then they didn't put out the other item and that was missed. So, you know, having that, just one hauler, you wouldn't have that kind of communication overlap. So, that's kind of an example of where communications might be improved. Also, you know, with staff, communicating with one hauler and then hanging up and calling another hauler for various reasons can be problematic. We do put out a solid waste guide annually and since we have the two haulers, what has happened is city staff really has to draft the solid waste guide now and kind of get approval from the haulers and then we request that, because it was written in the contract that both haulers do the education, now we require that they cover the cost of that solid waste guide. So, it's kind of like the city's doing all the work when we had asked them to do the work initially. So, it was kind of hard to coordinate that communication. Some other benefits of bundling are mixing and matching of equipment, you know, if a truck breaks down or they can't get to a route, you know, they have similar equipment for one hauler. It may cause streamlined operations, costs of managing the contract, as I had stated, you know, staff dealing with just one contractor. Another item I wanted to mention, but I don't have it listed here, is the billing. So, currently, the city of Maplewood tax on the recycling fee to residents' water bill because again, we don't do utility billing. So, those bills, St. Paul Regional Water Services and the surrounding cities that bill our residents for water services tack on a fee for that bill. So, you know, we may save money in, in requiring that a new hauler with a bundled system do all the billing for both trash and recycling. And there's, there's several other opportunities and improvements with bundling. Also with RFP, you have this opportunity to do major upgrades whereas in a negotiation process, you may not. So, some examples of major upgrades may include a pay-as-you-throw system and that would include pricing variables where you would have the 95-gallon be priced higher, much higher, a greater variable than the 32-gallon and so that would subsidize that smaller size so that residents would choose the smaller size, thereby reducing their waste. And so, that's a pay-as-you-throw system in the pricing realm and that's one opportunity you could have with a major upgrade. Additionally, carts, it should be noted that, of course, Tennis currently owns the carts that are on the city streets, but the city may have an opportunity, well, does have an opportunity with Ramsey County in their grant process to fund up to 50% of city-owned recycling carts or $400,000, whichever is more. So, that's something that the city should really take a strong look at because of course, owning your own recycling carts in the future allows smaller haulers, number one, to bid on your recycling. It also can reduce the rates of the recycling to the residents. So, those are a few of the major upgrades. Then Ramsey County support, so Ramsey County, of course, charges cities with managing the recycling even though, you know, legislatively, they are charged to have that oversight. And they like to see this RFP process because it does allow cities, again, to make these major overhauls which would upgrade recycling versus just a negotiation process where you may normally only look at pricing. Some of the cons for an RFP, staff time, you know, could take less staff time to, excuse me, may take additional staff time to draft an RFP and review those proposals. And then pricing, you know, whether you do an RFP or negotiations, there really is no guarantee that prices submitted will be competitive. So, either way, it's kind of a gamble. But now going on to the negotiations, the pros there, of course, we have two great partners, Tennis Sanitation and Republic Services, both doing great jobs for the city of Maplewood for the last nine, let's see, nine to seven years for those haulers. So, we have that existing partnership that we could maintain with negotiations. And then staff time, it may take less staff time to negotiate new contracts. And then the cons, again, pricing, as I stated, no guarantee that you get better pricing through negotiations. The timing, and this is key, I think, you know, we really are up against a hard deadline. If we're to put out an RFP, we really should do that by May, maybe release that RFP by May. So, we can get those proposals in by June or July. With the contract being awarded in August, this would allow the contractors that was chosen, contractor or contractors, to have additional, to have the appropriate amount of time, you know, to prepare for the beginning of that contract in 2020, which might include cart rollouts or truck purchases, things of that nature. And then the final con would be you can't make these major changes that I had indicated. So, with that, we're bringing this to you tonight. Again, number one, we know that we see some new faces here on our council since we organized our trash hauling back in 2011. So, I think it's key to bring you up to date and up to speed on our current system. And then to get some feedback, number one, on that policy question, which is currently in our trash contract and states, the city shall use a competitive purchasing process to select a contractor after the term, after the term of the trash hauling contract expires, which again, that was a seven-year contract and that will end now, end of this year. And then to get some guidance on the RFP versus the negotiations process, again, that RFP process, we would begin right away working with our, working with Ramsey County and their technical advisors. So, if we do go the RFP route, Ramsey County would pay for the consulting work to draft the RFP and help us review those proposals. They offer this through cities as part of our work on the recycling programs. And then again, we'd have to start that right away for the feasibility of releasing that RFP in May sometime. And then negotiations, if we went that route, we would begin that immediately with amended contracts approved by the city council by, I don't know, approximately mid-year. But one thing to note is that it's almost impossible to do a two-track system, to start drafting an RFP while undergoing negotiations. The reason is the haulers, I don't think, would be forthright in coming with proposals knowing that there might be an RFP hanging over their head because, of course, that information that's relayed during the negotiations, they might fear, becomes public. So, with that, city council, I stand for questions. Thank you.
I thought what I would do is have any questions for Sean and then I'd like to invite, after Sean answers some questions from the council, give both Republican Tennis an opportunity to address the council. So, councilmembers, do you have any questions for Sean? I don't, didn't see who was first, Brian or Councilmember Smith?
Mine's more just general comments, so I can wait till after the presentations.
Okay. Do you have any questions for Sean?
No, I have basic comments because I'm the only one who's been here through trash and trash and re-trash.
Okay. So, we'll reserve those until later.
Might be good to let Kathy go first for context, seriously.
Okay. Why don't we have Republic, only be, oh, for Sean?
Yeah.
Okay, Councilmember Knudsen, I'm sorry, I did not see your light. Oh, sorry.
I'm just wondering if, if it's possible, given, I think you described an opportunity from Ramsey County to, to own the carts. In any regard, couldn't you have Ramsey County... In any regard, couldn't you have Ramsey County provide the carts in any situation, whether it was a negotiation or the RFP?
Well, they don't own them, we do. Thank you, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Knutson. So first, it would be the city of Maplewood purchasing the carts with county funding, as a clarification.
Right.
But yes, you are correct that you don't necessarily have to put that out in the RFP. If you have a contract, you can always switch the carts. But clearly, it is easier to do, to have that contractor prepared and to bid on that contract, knowing that the city will own those carts.
Thank you.
Okay. Then representatives from Republic, would you like to address the council first? Welcome to the council workshop. Please state your name for us.
Romack Franklin with Republic Services. Thank you so much for having me here this evening, Madam Mayor and council members. Congratulations on your newly elected positions there. I think what we'd like to just say on behalf of Republic Services is that we have enjoyed the partnership with the city of Maplewood, providing the trash service. We look forward to negotiating with the city. We think that there's a great opportunity there for the city. If negotiation is the path you decide to go, only because you do have some of the lowest rates in the Midwest, you actually are, you're the lowest in Minnesota and possibly the Midwest. We feel like the increase would be minimal, but we'd be able to provide additional services if you'd like. We'd just like the opportunity to be able to sit down and talk to you more about those. So, any questions?
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Franklin? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Tennis Recycling. Welcome to the city council workshop. Nice to see you again.
Thank you. My name is Willie Tennis, Tennis Sanitation. Good evening, Madam Mayor, council, staff. One information from me.
Anything you'd like to talk to us about?
Well, I guess, we had a meeting with Sean, and Tennis's first choice would be to go out for RFP. We, before 2011, we had 45% of the city, and we lost all that. And residents have shown that they still would like to have us as their hauler. And the recycling, we've had since 2010. And I know Angela just wrote a letter, whatever, but we've only had five complaints since 2000, for the last five years. So we feel our service in the city is very outstanding. We take pride in our service. And as far as pricing goes, Maplewood definitely has the lowest recycling price anywhere in the Twin Cities. And we feel that the trash side, we also could have a very good price, because we always say, as a private, family-owned company, we should be able to operate less than a national company. We have less overhead. And we would like to have both those contracts, combine it into one. But we would settle for an extension. That would be fine also.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. Tennis? Okay, thank you. If you want to take a seat. Councilmember Juniman.
AKA, the Trash Lady of Maplewood. I've been doing this since 1985. Aye, aye, aye. You know, the easy way to do this is the negotiation piece, if you just look at it from what's the easiest way to keep going the way we are. But policy-wise, we did say at the time, a lot of it had to do with the strife that goes along with going to organize collection. People love only one person more than themselves, and that's their trash hauler, which you find out when you go that route. But we did it because we said we wanted to see that services could be possibly added on or improved, and that other companies would have a grab. But there is a little history to that. While some people think we went with only one company at the outset, that isn't exactly true. We threw it out to everybody that was there, and only the larger companies grabbed. So you may as well, you have to tell the whole story before you, otherwise, it looks like we only wanted or asked for the large haulers. That was not true. So, but times have changed, and so there are other services we're looking for. I think it won't be long before we will definitely want to go to, as Sean pointed out, the pay-as-you-throw. That was one of the first things that inspired us initially. For seniors who have this little teeny bag of trash every other week, or even for people who do a lot of recycling, they just don't have a lot of trash. It's just, you know, it's just not there. And so that was one of our inspirations initially. We just knew that you don't start out doing that, because it's too complicated. But we've been doing it long enough now. That's probably a goal, I would say, in the next couple of years. And then there's the whole piece of the county, at some point, is going to try and get us into, if you can believe their timeline, into organics collection. And so that will be something we'll need to add on as an option. We talked at the beginning, way back in the initial stages, of asking them to go to more efficient trucks. And so that's something you have to consider. Can you do that through negotiating? I don't know. Some of those things are fairly significant, and so if we really want to follow through with what the original plan was, we may have to, actually have to throw it out to RFP. If we thought we could go through the actions of getting those things I just mentioned and more, and still getting a good price, negotiating may sound attractive. I don't know that that's true necessarily, and I also don't know if it's fair, because we'd be adding a bigger picture, and if somebody else made some advancements in the last seven years, that we would want to throw it out and see what they would offer us. But there is, it is true, we do have the lowest price anywhere in the state of Minnesota. All I can say is, St. Paul, gnash your teeth. Too bad they don't know how to follow a model. The key to this whole thing, and I give credit to Sean and Chris Swanson, who leapt ship and probably wondering why he did at this point, he's probably going glob, trying to turn them around. We have a wonderful contract, and it's been used as a model in other places in the country. So the contract is definitely the magic. There's no doubt about it. So you have to have staff who knows what you're looking for and what you want, and how to put it into a format that can be presented. And so whether we go with negotiating or RFP, we have to be very specific what we expect and what kind of expansion of programs we might want to see, so that it's in there. Because once it's in there, there's no wiggle. They can't say, well, we're not going to do that. Because I believe in the current contract, if they said they weren't going to do that, I think they have three months to behave themselves, or else we go, take a hike, we'll get a new contract, new company. And that leads to the cart thing. The reason to own carts for both parts of this is you can change vendors in a whole lot less time if you own the carts. There's no flipover. And so we're better off. It's just that simple. So if we want to keep this as simple as can be, and it's never simple, but as simple as can be, and also have the options that we're looking for, that's what we want out of this. So, you know, it's obviously up to a lot of discussion which way we go. And again, I say, negotiating seems easier, but is it the best choice? And if we go for RFP, we must be very definite with our staff, so that they can put into that RFP and then the contract exactly what we want to see, because then our residents are guaranteed that what we promised them, they're going to get. There's no wiggling out of it.
Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. And I'd like to thank Ms. Finwall, Councilmember Juniman, City Manager Coleman, for fighting this fight. I think, I know that it was a tough, a tough conversation for a long time, and I think what we have now in our hauling system is really fantastic. And I think even those that were critical back in the day have come around to understand we've created efficiency and low cost, and a lot of things that some of our neighbors have struggled with recently. So I really do feel good about this program, and I feel good about the partners we've had. I think Tennis and Republic both have done a great job, and it worked well with us. I know just personally, the service that we get in our, our house is fantastic, and both drivers of both trucks are friendly, and, you know, it's, it's a big deal, right? They're part of the neighborhood, and those little things matter. Waving at neighbors, things like that matters. That said, I also agree with Councilmember Juniman that I think, you know, in my day job as a vendor to large organizations, RFPs make us fight for our customers. They make us go the extra mile. They make us bring the right technologies forward. They make us think newly about our customers every time we go through them, and they make us stay competitive with our pricing. I think it's a positive process. I also think our current vendors are going to be very good candidates in that process, should we go that way. But I think, based on being consistent with what we, what the council at that time said they were going to do, as well as, I think, just the exercise of nudging our vendors and potential vendors to bring their best feet forward in creating competition. I mean, at the end of the day, our economy is based on competition, and I think this is one of those places where, you know, we need to keep everybody competitive, and that's what's going to keep everybody doing their best. And so I really think the RFP is the way to go. I like the idea of having some flexibility based on owning our own carts as well. I think that especially if we can get them 50 cents on the dollar, or whatever that calculus looks like. You know, I think anything that gives us nimbleness in the way that we work with vendors is good for us. And, and if we can bring down those monthly costs without a, without a huge hit to, without a huge hit to the overall levy, we bring on those, bring down those ongoing costs, I think that's a positive, too. So, so that's kind of where I'm at on it.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith?
Bet, thank you.
Councilmember Knutson?
I agree with Councilmember Smith. What I'm thinking is, is that our two vendors, which, you know, tussle with the idea of the long-term partnership and all that kind of thing, yet they know our community very well. They know the routes very well. They know the capacities. They know what they haul and have to pay for every week. And so they have an opportunity, I think, you know, to step up, even if there is an RFP, which I support an RFP, to really come out as winners. And again, as I echo Councilmember Smith, I think the service has been great. That little communication thing two weeks ago really didn't bother me. You know, I, small thing, given the overall service all these years. So that's, you know, it's not a big flaw. But I think the RFP is the way to go. I think that's a responsible way to approach it.
Okay. Thank you, councilmembers. In looking at this, I would agree with my fellow councilmembers up here, that I think an RFP is the appropriate way to go. I want to commend both Republic and Tennis, because I think you both have done a fabulous job in our community, and we don't get complaints about garbage or recycling. And I think you do an excellent job, and, you know, I read about what's happening with one of our neighboring cities and the difficulty they're having, and I just think we are so fortunate out here that both of your companies are just exceptional, and we are very pleased with that. With that being said, I know that the council has had discussions about going out for RFPs in the past for city services, because I think that, as councilmembers, as the mayor, I believe that it really is part of our due diligence, that we regularly review on a, on some type of basis, that we keep it out there on our radar, that we should do RFPs, that, you know, we want to make sure that we are getting the best value for our residents and for our businesses, and that really competition, I think, is good for our city. With that being said, I think we've got at least four voices that are saying RFP as a recommendation to staff. Now I'd like to maybe switch that a little bit and talk about some of the elements that we'd like you to think about in terms of inclusion. And I want to throw out there that, that this is not a requirement that someone bid on both recycling and trash hauling, because I don't, we have worked very well for the last seven years using two different companies. So I don't want this to be viewed as a, you have to bid for both or none, because that isn't, that's not a priority for me. We've had great relationships with two different companies. The little kerfuffle last week because of the polar vortex, or whatever storm it was that we were having at the time, I don't think it really bothered anybody. It was just kind of an expectation, kind of part of being Minnesotan, that you just adapt to it. You know, it's tough pulling those carts in with all that snow, but, you know, we, we worked it out. So from my perspective, I don't see that as a reason. I think that people can bid one and the other, or they can do both, or just one or the other, I should say. I'd also like to see some type of thought about composting. Is that something, you know, I see that in the future. I do like the idea of the pay-as-you-throw, so that if you do consume and have big carts, you're going to be paying more for that. And I, certainly in reading some of the materials, and I know that over the years, I've been up here and I've heard both companies give us reports on an annual basis about our solid waste and how we're doing with that. And I know that containers are getting lighter, you know, food containers and such, and so recycling is, the, the whole industry has changed. And I think by going with an RFP, that that really helps us. But those are my three things that I'd like to see staff consider, and I'm sorry, I didn't see who did, who. Councilmember Juniman, let's go with you first.
Eeny, meeny, miny, moe. I would ask that staff go back, I know Sean has in her voluminous files, some of the things we had for the future, the original contract. And maybe it would be a good thing if she sent that to all of us again, so you knew what, where we were looking when we first did this. And there are some new things from the industry as well that they can give us. But certainly, we did have in mind pay-as-you-throw, and we did have in mind greater incentives for less trash and more recycling. That was very much. And there was an item in there about hybrid trucks or going to an alternate fuel truck at some point. So we need to have, have a look at that again, I think, what's going on in the industry with the actual vehicles, just so we know what's out there and what we're looking for. And again, like you say, both of these companies have done us well, and I do know there's perceived advantages to bundling, but I as well don't think that's a necessity. Certainly, if one company wants to do that, and they, they throw us an advantage by doing it that we can see, then we might be so enticed. I mean, you know, it depends on who bids and what they throw our way. But I do know that service is important, and these two people have certainly proved themselves with us. And so one of the things we asked in the last RFP, I know, was a certain set of references. And so we would certainly need that from new companies especially, other areas that they have served, where people could say to us, okay, the service was good, and we had these things available. I also know that, and I don't know how I would go about this, but that'd be up to staff, wouldn't it? If, for the national companies especially, the same companies in other parts of the country have other services that they supply that we don't have, but they're there, and they're cheap. So I think we could do some homework on that. Things like composting and organics and things are part of the regular program in other parts of the country. So we can look at how that would be to our benefit when we're redoing a contract. I think we need to go back to, I know we did originally, but I think we've had a little problem, probably in the last year, with, and Republic was very accommodating, originally at least, with having customer service people that only service Maplewood, so they know exactly what's going on here. We really don't want somebody in Podunk, Ohio, answering the telephone about where, what happened to my trash today. And some companies do that and some don't. When we asked for it, they gave it to us. I know there's been a little bit of an issue in the last year or so, but we need to also put that, I think, back in our contract again, so that when, sometime, someone from Maplewood calls, right away, the person on the phone knows what the issue is, maybe even able to say, oh, yeah, you're on route such and such. We had a truck problem. That's customer service. So I think we need to be very aware of that again as well.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Juniman. Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, one of the things I love about RFPs is when they're done well, it's not all about taking the lowest price, right? It's about- It's about balancing out the level of service, the commitment, the, those extras, not extras, but things that are becoming less extra, but, you know, things like composting and all those things, balancing it with price and making the best, best choice. And I think one of the reasons I am as confident as I am about the idea of going to an RFP is how good of a job the city has done in the past doing this, and creating contracts. I think that, while I'm sure you guys aren't real thrilled they're the lowest in the Midwest, we are. So, you know, it's, I feel pretty confident about that. So, but I also think it's really important to let the haulers know, this isn't all about price, it's also about quality, quality of service, you know, and, you know, while I agree with Councilmember Juneman, it's nice to have that personalized approach. Also, you know, we have a saying in the, in the floor sweeper business that I'm in, that everybody thinks their dirt is special, you know? And, I mean, to some degree, it's, it's, it's picking up, it's picking up people's garbage. I mean, it's, it's a, what makes the difference in that are those little things, that, that the way that it's billed, the accuracy of the billing, the, the ease of customer service. It's all those other things that really make or break it, I think. So I just hope that we have a, can, you know, also to Councilmember Juneman's point, go back and look at what we did before, because we did it well, and then figure out what's new. And I think I'd love to have composting options, more, more advanced recycling, and, you know, green options along those ways. I think upgrading truck technology is great, but I do think that having some sensitivity that those trucks last a long time, if they're well-maintained, so that it's, you know, something that vendors can plan for and phase in over time.
That's why it was in the first contract.
Yeah, right. But those, probably a lot of those trucks are still on the road, because they're, they're built pretty well. So, you know, but I do think that it has to be the whole picture.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Niblet?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't want to disagree with my elbow partner here, Councilmember Smith, but for me, price is a big deal. And I like to brag about Maplewood and its cost of trash and recycling. I do. It's a big deal, because nobody else is paying the rates we're paying, and you all know that. But it's also about service, and we've had good service, and the level of service. I, I'm glad to hear about the, the background from Councilmember Juneman. I didn't know all of that history. But if you all are going to negotiate the way that you've negotiated in the past, I feel confident that we're in good hands, and look forward to what's next.
Ms. Finwall, have we given you enough information to get started?
Boy, have you ever. Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council, for the thoughtful feedback. So it sounds like an RFP will be in line, and...
I would say that that would be correct. An RFP is in line, I think that we are all in agreement with that. Councilmember Smith, is there something else you want to add?
Yeah, I just wanted to also agree with you and put an underline under, I don't think bundling is critical. I think it's nice if we can make it work, but I think if we can spread the love across a couple of vendors too, and, and even have some competition ongoing throughout the contract, is healthy. So I think there's pluses and minuses, and so I don't think that should be overly encouraged in the process.
Very good, thank you. Ms. Finwall, can you tell us then the next steps in terms of what you're going to be doing and what we will see next?
Thank you, Mayor. So my recommendation would be for staff to work with the city manager Coleman on a schedule. And now, in the past, when we created the RFP for the organized trash, we had kind of a, a longer process, because we were creating something brand-new. Right now, we have, we have a good system in place, so we don't need, you know, to come back and say, "What are your goals? What are you, you know?" I think it'll be an easier process. But we for sure want to come back and get some direction on, on the RFP with the council, as well as our environmental commission, one or two meetings with them, draft the RFP, get the city council approval, and, and hope to meet that deadline of releasing that in May.
Okay.
So we'll come back to you with a, with a schedule for that.
That sounds very doable. And I like bringing in the Environmental Resources Commission. I think that that's a very good idea, and then coming back to us before it actually goes out. Okay. Councilmember Juneman, you had something else?
I just wanted to say, yes, that I know that she's going to bring in our environmental commission, and they were very key as well in the original package that went, I mean, they're the ones who kept us grounded, and they're the ones who saw all the RFPs. Man, we had a pile. Anyway, so I, I, their role is very crucial. But again, we are very grateful for the service we've had from both of these vendors, and we are only doing the RFP process, because we think it's best for our citizens, and it's best for us to know what new you have to offer. So you just need to get out there and punch it out with the other people in the industry, and come back as the best offers, is what I see this as.
Thank you, councilmembers, for all of your input, and I think you've got enough to take this to the next step. So councilmembers, I believe that ends our council workshop. Any other comments before we adjourn? Okay, then we will adjourn, and we will convene at 7:00 for our regularly scheduled council meeting.